Started with tonight's meeting. I'm Chris Pfaff, I'll be chairing tonight's meeting. All meetings are recorded by Westcat. Is there anyone else here who'd like to record tonight's meeting? I see nobody. As a reminder, I'd like to ask you to please turn off your cell phones. The agenda is available at the back of the room. The meeting will follow the order on the agenda. The meeting will be civil and all people will be treated respectfully. The format of the meeting will be when an item is called, the applicant will come forward to the podium and present their application to the board. The board will precede the staff comments. The board will ask questions to the applicant. Then the public will be given an opportunity to comment. When it's time for the public comment period, the chairman will call on those wishing to speak to the podium. Once at the podium, please identify yourself and state your name and address for the record. All comments and questions shall be directed through the chair. All people will be given the opportunity to speak, but in the interest of time and fairness, repetitive or off-topic comments may be cut short. Abby, any changes to tonight's meeting agenda?
Yes, we have a public hearing for 390 Washington Street. That's an EIDR and special permit was scheduled for tonight. The applicant has requested a hearing postponed to your next meeting on August 2nd, which will take place in the same location at 7:00 PM. So if there's anyone here for that application that will not be going for it tonight. And then also, item number four on the agenda, 14 Washington Street, Hogentire. You had continued that hearing until tonight to allow Conservation Commission to review that proposal. However, it's not on Conservation Agenda until tomorrow night. So I request that you continue that also to your next meeting on August 2nd.
Okay, thank you. So if you're here for items three or four, they'll be heard at a later date. So number one on tonight's agenda is University Station. Request for project specific signage, alternative package signage.
Yes, so what you received a revised supplemental sign package from the applicant on Thursday. I forwarded to you by email. In that is an updated narrative description along with the corresponding plan showing the locations and showing each proposed sign. If you recall, this item had been before you in May and then also on June 14th. At your June 14th meeting, you had made several recommendations for the applicant and the applicant has worked with staff. We did meet in that time between the two meetings. Later in June, we met and they submitted this revised signage plan last week. And also on Friday, I had sent you my recommendation based off of that revised submitted. I would, based on what they submitted, they had revised and relocated the code of conduct signs. There are now four of them located at locations that we felt were better accessible for pedestrians to get up close to review what's on those signs. The restaurant parking lot signs, those are the ones that are over by Notch Avenue Joe's have been relocated and shown on the plan. For four of them that are locations that I think are more effective for people coming in when they're driving their vehicles and then visible for when they get out of the vehicles. The University Station business signs, that name had changed, those are the signs. They were previously called the sidewalk directory signs. Those are shown on the plan on the green areas with a maximum of 14 total locations. And the number of the Wedman's parking lot signs have been reduced. I would, my recommendation is that they be, the number of those Wedman's parking lot signs be reduced even further. The revised plan shows a total of 12 signs. I recommend that there be a maximum of eight with six in front of Wedman's and two in the Wedman's parking lot. I think those signs are large enough to be viewed. That's about almost one per aisle, or almost one in every aisle or every other aisle. So I think they're still effective with the six in front of Wedman's and two next to Wedman's behind the plaza. And then my recommendation would also be to specify that the temporary open, now open signs, the code of conduct signs and the University Station business signs be located or any motion would be located on the brick band where the sidewalk furniture is. And then the reusable bag signs on the Wedman's car corals do have a set limit. I had suggested or updated today to suggest being allowable until September 2017 with the possibility of a one-year extension, which will be until September 2018 with written approval from me after discussion with the board overall. So that's my recommendation. You have in front of you the revised, what I have printed out is the revised signage plan and narrative with my suggested changes. And I had just drafted a motion for work off of.
Okay, thank you. Can you better identify where you're proposing the six in front of Wedman's? I had to see three with X's.
Oh, I have, I think, two X's and then I crossed out the reference to eight.
Oh, yeah, two X's, oh.
That's a six.
Okay.
You can see that. I mean, I was trying to, I had Xed out, suggested the ones in, the ones closest to the bank.
I got it.
Okay, the bank and the building out.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Please take them.
Well, Austin, can I ask if the board had any questions for Abby's recommendation? Comments, questions for Abby?
Okay. Your amendment is referencing your changes to the package?
I, let's see, I had, my suggested changes were in the track changes in the narrative and then.
It says as amended. I'd say as amended.
Oh, yes, I did, as amended. If you went with this one, so that it would, the motion would match the amended version.
So as I understand, Abby, what you've laid out for us, you're recommending everything that they've requested except for dropping 12 to eight, right? Parking lot signs.
Yes, and with the limitation for the reusable bag sign.
Reusable bag sign.
And the idea of that is, I think that's enough time for people to develop that habit of bringing in their bags into the store.
Did we last time say the temporary sign was going to have the same frame as the conduct sign and the business sign? And we're going to get away from that plastic base? I can't, I, I already discussed it, but I don't know what we.
Previously, that was how the code of conduct sign was shown. The temporary sign has always been.
Okay, so the temporary sign is going to stay with the same plastic base?
Yes.
I know we talked about it, I just couldn't remember exactly what we wanted to have. Okay, so we have the applicant's proposal. We have Abby's recommendation. So you don't have any questions for the applicant?
Well, because the applicant didn't really.
Well. You can ask him.
That's fine, I can ask him.
Can I?
I would speak on behalf of the applicant. I'm asking now, Paulson thought of, I would ask the board to make one consideration ahead is, we're agreeing with all of the edits that Abby's recommended to the board, with one exception ahead is, rather than the six signs that Abby's recommending in front of Wedman's, we would ask to consider what we proposed, which is two additional ones, so that it would be. And just off the positioning, it's one, two, three, across the closest to the store, one, two, three, furthest from the store. And we have, we have recommended the two in between those two rows. It's a large field. Those, those signs are spaced at something like 250 feet apart, even with the two of them. And I think that the scale and magnitude of that field is lost to the, to the number of six signs versus eight signs. Otherwise, we're fine with the other recommendations.
So your counterproposal is 12 to 10, so 12 to eight?
Correct, and we're in agreement that the sidewalk could be refused by two.
Okay. It did happen by, over the weekend, last weekend maybe? And I was discouraged to see the temporary sign, which now I know holds the code of conduct sign and won't, falling off of a curb chained. The chain was holding it from falling off over by the lifetime sign.
I mean, I saw the same, I drove by the same sign.
And I saw it was replaced or put back up on the sidewalk, but I think that kind of highlighted to me the very reason why the nature of the temporariness was disconcerting. It looked really bad, I guess, to see it just hanging there and it was the chain against a, might have been a light pole, I can't remember what it was. And it was fixed probably within the hour or two. But it just didn't present well for a University Station. I'll just say that. And I, maybe it was an anomaly, I don't know. Just, I happened by it while we were discussing this, so it caught my full attention. Somebody fixed it, so someone was on the ball there.
It was obviously the, I didn't know it was going after two planning board members to see it.
Yeah, I guess so, yeah. Two of us, I don't know if it was the same day or not, it was the same sign evidently, but. Okay, so we have, their proposal now includes 10. And they're agreeing to Abby's recommendations for the corral reusable sign for a period of training, as it were, for their customers till September of 17, to get used to using the bags with a reminder. They're proposing 10 instead of Abby's proposal of 10. Any discussion on these things?
So just actually, I'll just ask one clarifying, one clarifying question. It's not their work, but. So the now open sign with the orange, the depicted orange on the sheet. So hypothetically, if you have all, if you have all tenants, all retail spaces occupied for 30 days plus, you'll never see that sign, I guess. It's only allowed to be there 30 days after.
For a new tenant.
Yeah, correct, okay. That's all.
I've got a question about the restaurant signs. At the Notch Avenue Joe's and the proposed restaurant for the future, there's only one way in and out of this parking lot, correct?
Correct.
And we have four signs in that parking area for the two restaurants?
Well, I think about it, when the hotel is constructed, there'll actually be two ways into the parking area. It would be one from the hotel side of it.
But they're still going to continue to use the same roadway out, correct?
Right, the ultimate drive to University Station. I think the discussion that we had at the last meeting was that in, you know, in theory, one sign on the light post that's in the divider island when you come down that main entrance drive off of University, yeah, we should do it. But in our view and from our experience, that lot is very, very tempting to commuters.
If they already know they're not supposed to back them.
Right.
So a sign telling them that they can't, I don't see them doing either.
Well, you know, I think three signs and I think we ended up with three signs within the parking lot itself.
Yeah, one on the road. One on the road.
Yeah, right.
Well, there's one right at the edge at the bottom there.
Right, there's one, there's one that's closer to the hotel side of the lot and then there's, and then there are two or three others that are scattered through the lot. Again.
Is that facing into the lot?
It allows us to say to people that violate that and become habitual violators, you know, when we ultimately go there to tell them, well, why are you telling me that? Well, because it's adequately posted and you shouldn't be violating it. I mean, I'm sorry, Tom Bowen is with me. He's our property manager. Bill Colman, the last meeting, he's regional manager for apartments.
I don't know if this, what John wants to add. Before you actually told someone, it's helpful and a police department would like to be able to say it's obvious that you shouldn't have that. As obvious as it may be, you have to make it exceedingly obvious that you shouldn't be parking there.
I understand your point, but I think there has to be a happy medium of obviously posting it and not having signs which are just going to be up saying the same thing that everybody already knows in the first place. Will there be likely more requests at the hotel? For more, more no parking signs or customer parking lot? Is the parking lot for the hotel seeming attractive enough? It makes it harder to get to, it's harder to get to unless you get the walkway. I'm just writing at the future.
With the walkway, that implies it shouldn't be in that corner. They should be walking because it's a shot of walk from something to get to the train.
To walk down by the train itself?
Right, from the corner next to the hotel, walking down the path which would take you right to the station and the platform.
Down Green Line Street?
Yeah. Someone will go under the bridge.
Right, and once they, if they do that, I don't know if they're going to do that if you don't get approval, right?
Well, they're supposed to be working on it.
Right now.
Paul, let me just tell us how that's coming.
You know, I think the most, the most tempting, you may remember the hotel site plan is the hotel building is here and there's one tray of parking that is along that rear boundary. I would think that that tray would be the most enticing to commuter passengers. Otherwise, they're parking in front of the hotel and having to walk around the hotel building and it would seem. I mean, the concentration of this signs where we have them are here because we think that the biggest temptation is in this part of the parking lot where people, you've seen people walk across down, not quite at the intersection, but almost at the intersection. There's no need to change it. So to answer the question with the hotel, I suspect the hotel might look for signs if they felt like once they're in operation, they've had people abusing them.
Well, if you have commuters going down to New York overnight, hotel parking lot is the place to go, not a restaurant parking lot. Hotel has overnight parking all the time, so you would blend in with the cars.
Right, right. And hotel will be, they used to have at least that.
Yeah, they take.
And they'll take notice of it.
They take plate numbers when you write the street. Okay.
How long do you, as?
I don't want to cut you off.
No, there's no. I was above that. As, would you be liable to a compromise of two signs? One on the drive up and another one closest to the train station? We have it located now at the edge of the restaurant seats, edge of their parking lot. Take out the one in the center and the one closest to the hotel.
I think the one, the one that's closest to the hotel is really going to serve as a reminder to hotel guests, which is the reason why we, after we spent some time with New York Abbey decided on those locations.
I say forced too much for such a small area.
It's not as big as regular signs.
Well, as you say, it's not, it looks small here, I agree. If you bring it over to Wedman's, it's.
I've been in the parking lot, I know how they, it can be, it is large, but when you've got two restaurants next door to each other and they're basically sharing the parking area. But for four signs, it's the same thing that was stated when they.
If the board's inclined to see a reduction in that lot, I, you know, I would suggest that there's, you can afford to lose one and that would be the one closest to the, to the future restaurant location. If you're going to drop one, I think in terms of.
Which way will that one be facing?
The one closest to the restaurant.
Facing the red dot.
Yeah, the one near restaurant seats.
You would probably face the red dot to all the parkers. Yeah, capturing people track, coming down the travel aisle looking for a space.
This is a single sided sign?
Yes.
And the one near the hotel parking lot will be facing into the parking lot, taken?
Yes.
You know, it's next to the entrance there.
I think, you know, we could start with that orientation and see if it made sense to rotate it or it could even.
Could be either way, that would be very good.
It could be the way, it could even slide a little bit closer to, you know, physical connection.
Are you, these signs located, are there lamp posts or something to mount them on?
These are, these are all on, on light posts.
So those are the locations that are existing light posts?
Yes.
And the, except of course, the red dot, which is the conduct, the code of conduct sign is right at an intersection of two sidewalks. Is there a place to put it? Put a block in the sidewalk or putting it on the, on the landscaping?
It would probably be, it would probably be right off of the edge of the sidewalk in the landscape strip. The idea about that location, when we talked about it at a staff level, was it, it would capture a view of the most pedestrians. It was initially proposed out on the main entrance drive coming off of University Ave, which would be primarily cars passing by.
Okay, so we have a board member's recommendation for an amendment to the proposal. We have Abby's recommendation. And we have the applicant's agreed to amendment for the proposal. I think we're probably ready if we want to make a motion. We're, we're close. We have various ideas of what to do. I'm not certain we're going to get four all in agreement, but.
I agree, we're close, we're a lot closer. And we're just getting down to the point where, all right, two more or two less signs here and one more, one less sign there. But I'm still opposed to any signs with the exception of the now open sign, which is obviously a temporary sign, it'll be only a 30 days. But the code of conduct signs and all of the University Station business signs are still here as temporary signs, which means they could be moved anywhere. And there's just, I'm opposed to that again, as I've said before, because it presents, presents a real enforcement problem because these signs could be moved or fall over or end up anywhere. And I, you know, they're definitely a problem and I don't think we should be allowing those numerous portable temporary signs. And I did suggest that you could put mounting points at various places throughout there and if you want to move them, you could move the sign, but each time you move it, it would just be bolted into place. They certainly have those. It's a similar thing that they do when they take out and remove the fences for outdoor seating when they remove them in the wintertime. I've been looking at some of these places and some of them have, you know, they're just easily removable and they don't have to, drill up the sidewalk every spring and patch it up every fall. And I was suggesting something like that would be a good way of doing it. And that would solve that department area, maybe with the sign.
Okay, we have another amendment proposal.
Well, I mean, I mean.
I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it sounds like, as proposed, you would not vote for it.
I would not vote for this as proposed for that reason.
So, I apologize. I'm continuing to look at, yes.
Could I, can I recommend you consider making approval with a condition that if it becomes a problem, that they're not properly maintained and they seem to be moving into the pedestrian way or falling into the street area? Then a condition would kick in that they need to be mounted the way Steve proposes, but let's give the applicant an opportunity to manage them properly. And, you know, if that fails, then we can come back to the next level. Rather than put in those mounting brackets all throughout the development in more areas than there are actually a number of signs, because the intent is to be able to move these signs to different places. Rather than put a mounting bracket in front of every store, why not test it out for a while and see how it goes?
Right, with the exception of the code of conduct signs, they are intended to be moved, correct? Even the business sign holder.
The now open signs and the business signs are intended to be moved and their displays change throughout the season.
Right, so the, what about the code of conduct signs? They're right now okay, where you think they're going to be permanently? So why aren't those installed permanently?
Well, you build in the flexibility by not installing them permanently and if the location where they are doesn't.
It may be proved to be the wrong spot.
Yeah.
We've already seen, it's a square where we've had problems with these signs. You know, we just heard about them tonight.
Well, there was, there was a different sign.
But was it a temporary sign?
It was a temporary, one of the now open signs was a problem.
Right. But the signs, they're going to move away.
And I, and I went, when I was there, I saw some other signs and they weren't, they were on the sidewalk itself, they were on the pavement.
There are some places where putting them on the pavement makes them practically invisible or makes them in a way of the area where pedestrians are moving between the sidewalk and the parking spaces. So they really need to be looked at on a case by case basis. You know, we can enforce it. We can have weekly checks, we can have daily checks. I know NED has people out there every day that are checking. Monitor that and see if it becomes a problem. They could report back to you after a month or in September and we can see how many instances there have been of signs that are moving into the pedestrian area. I'd say don't, don't cause an expensive fix to a problem unless we know that that problem really exists.
Yeah, but again, I think the other shopping malls where they have these portable signs and they're always in the way. They're always sitting out somewhere where they shouldn't be. Well, the people, they almost like to do it. Have to stick the sign out here, it's in everyone's way and then they'll have to read it. They don't want to have the walkway.
I am inclined to agree with Ms. Locken's proposal, but I don't think we're in a position to say it's going to be a problem necessarily. If they do their job and maintain them as they're proposing, I think it will present fine down there. I, I like the idea of having the flexibility of putting a six-month or 12-month review period so that the town planner can, if they're fielding calls or if they're down there themselves or if we ourselves see it, report it to Abby and we'll fix the problem after it presents and before. I do, I do agree that this is something we can, we can work with. We worked with them for a month or six weeks after our April or May meeting so we could go down and see it. And I haven't, other than this one sign falling off of the sidewalk, I haven't seen any other things that present negatively to me, so. What, I'm not in a position to make a motion, but what I would, I think I would feel comfortable with. What, I'm, I'm not in a position to make a motion, but what I would, I think I would feel comfortable with the proposal of ten. I would like to lose sign down, restaurant sign, I would say lose the one closest to the hotel, because I think that's, until the hotel is built, that's where people are parking at least for those two restaurants that are there. Um, once the second restaurant is built, that location you have there close to restaurant C is gonna get a lot more eyeballs than another one by the hotel, especially if the hotel is likely gonna have some, um, requests likely coming. I would anticipate that it would. That, I'm just one person on this board, so I'm not gonna presume to speak for the other three, but, um, I'm, I'm comfortable with, with those conditions. As long as the wording is done properly, that we, we can make the changes to more of a permanent nature if the temporary is a problem. Any discussion points?
How do we handle the verbiage of the, of the, uh, location?
I have a, um, draft motion here in your package today, did you see that?
Yeah, that last edition of the...
Right, so you could add to, um, condition number four was about the location of, um, temporary now open signs, the code of conduct signs and the university station business signs to be located not to interfere with the flow of pedestrian traffic and located, um, in the sidewalks, break fracture band or the landscape strip of the code sign. And then expand on that to be, if found to be problematic, to pedestrian flow a more permanent mounting mechanism shall be implemented, um, and reviewed in six months.
Six months, put this at December?
Review by the board.
Review.
By the board, six months.
Review by the board.
So are we allowing these signs, you shouldn't be allowing any signs in landscape areas. That was the rule for landscaping, so, and again, so long as I'm not even wrong, I've been, you know, asking for trouble doing that, so I can...
Okay.
So the only, the only one?
Just put it in the...
Is that red dot in the, in the, uh, restaurant? Is that the only one?
Yeah.
It's supposed to be in landscaping area? I think Mr. Sukada indicated it was in the landscaped area off of the sidewalk, correct?
There is sidewalk and landscaping.
That one where the curves around it are there or...
Is there a way to maybe make it concrete area for the sign itself? So it's not sitting in grass or mulch or something?
Yes.
It looks like it belongs there, intended? Okay, um...
And then it sounds like, if you're looking at that motion, it sounds like you're going with the ten. Um, so back to number one, would be the, um, ten parking lot signs for our wedmonds and three at the restaurant, um, parking lot signs for number two?
I, you, yes.
So it's the changes that are...
That's something I'm comfortable with, so I would like to make that motion, yeah. Is, are, are you comfortable with, with that? I, do you agree with my assessment of which ones to lose? The, the next restaurant's the first thing to be built, right, or not? No, the hotel?
Yeah, right now I'm going to use...
Right now, that bottom part by the hotel, I don't see any cars parked there for the night ever shows. Now, if the hotel's gonna be built and used before the second restaurant, I'll, you know what, I, I don't have a problem if you wanna make that the one, I just don't see eyes seeing it right now. Um, it seems like that's the part that's gonna be developed once the Marriott is built. So it seems like it lends itself to put it up once, once it's built. So people are parking there, you tell them, don't park here unless you're doing business here. But I don't know.
If, if the general feeling was that three inside the parking areas, one too many, if that's the general disposition board, then maybe it could be that there'd be two allowed within parking area mutually reupon, um, staff.
I'm, I'm fine with that. Two agree to bond with them.
Two within the parking lot?
Yes.
So lose one of them and the other two can be placed wherever they...
And then the one, the one on the traffic avenue and the drive stays.
Right. Is that what you did? That's the one I agree you did?
Right.
And then there would be two in the entrance?
And then get rid of one of these.
One of these three.
Right.
And the other two.
And the other option to...
They can move them and Abby has to agree to it.
Right.
And we can, in...
They're, they're gonna put it in a place where...
Come to an agreement with Abby on what makes more sense. And, you know, the hotel is, is just about ready to get underway, you know, they're at one yard line on the permit. They've mobilized, and so the hotel's coming. I'm okay with that.
So, do we work that into the...
Okay, yep, I got that.
Okay, you got that?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, are we, is someone to make this motion? Need to read this?
No.
Maybe the, uh, conditions have changed.
Yep. I don't think you have to read the whole motion. I think I have it right, that condition number one changes to the ten signs, number two, the three signs, um, one at the entrance, two in the restaurant parking lot, um, exact location to be approved by the town planner. Three stays the same with the, um, time limit, um, for, um, until two thousand seventeen. Then a one year extension for the reusable bag signs. And then the, um, locations of those temporary signs, and if found to be problematic, it will, um, a more permanent mounting mechanism and to be reviewed by the planning board within six months. Sounds like one of your...
Yeah, I think that, that hits everything, it's a good one to discuss. Um, so I'll make a motion to approve the university station supplemental sign package, the university station package project as depicted in the narrative document entitled, project specific signage alternate package university station supplemental sign package university station project dated July first, two thousand sixteen, prepared by the Westwood Marketplace Holdings LLC and submitted to the planning board on July seventh, two thousand sixteen, and the corresponding project plan entitled supplemental sign drum, uh, uh, products, supplemental sign plan drawing sheet S one, prepared by Tetra Tech dated May tenth, two thousand sixteen, revised July first, two thousand sixteen, as amended, as the following conditions have been already stated. A second, a second to motion to approve? Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Reopposed?
I still don't think this is gonna work.
You said that.
But given the, given the test period, I would...
Okay, we have four ayes. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Good night, good night.
Bye.
So next, we have, uh, five ten Far Reach Road?
Yes.
Correct?
What could I do with it? YouTube.
Uh, request for minor modification of approved earth material movement, uh, special permit plan. Thank you, Abby. The athlete here? Evening, hi.
How are you?
Great, thank you. Will you state your names and, for the record?
Don Devaney.
Okay, what have you two proposed to us?
The original plan, uh, we proposed, uh, didn't look fit a lot, particularly well. There was a lot of flooring brought in, very tall retain walls, chain link fence.
Do you mind, um, standing up there for the microphone?
For the benefit of the audience at home.
Uh, Don Devaney, um, the original plan had called for the house to be built, um, on the lower slope of the lot, which was going to entail a very large retaining wall, uh, eight to ten feet in height, and, uh, a fence along the top of it, very, uh, not very appealing to residential neighborhood such as Far Reach. We engaged a new architect, uh, to work with, you know, to come up with a new plan. We moved the house up the hill about a hundred feet. The original plan had called for about eleven or twelve hundred yards, I believe, to be brought in and filled. Uh, we have now, um, come up with a new plan, we're gonna have a excess cut of about eleven hundred and change. And I would, if the house is going to be set in the ledge, uh, there's a, there's a, there's a hollow, uh, in between the ledge. I've got a larger plan if you want to put every plan.
Sure, I'm, okay. Looking at what we approved before and what we're proposing now.
And the board, I have printed up for you the March approved plan with the, um, July modified plan.
Yes, so everything, everything's got pushed down that way?
So, the house... This is the road here, uh, the original house was down here, and it had a large retaining wall.
Okay, I remember that. See that?
Et cetera. Uh, now we've essentially flipped the house, we put the garage on the uphill side to act also as a proffer to the neighbor, uh, that had originally requested, uh, an extra time to be on the setback. So we put the garage on that end, so that's a much better proffer. Uh, could increase the size of the infiltrators to take all the rainwater. And as you can see, the ledge outpropping is here, uh, here, you know, is a one lane drive now going into parking court. Uh, there's a flat area here that's gonna be retained by stone, retain wall. Right, the maximum height is right here at this point, about six feet tall, and it's only for about two feet. Uh, it breaks, uh, some of the elevation to the house.
You're saying the old retaining wall is gonna be what?
Eight or ten.
Eight or ten?
I think, I don't have that, but if you want me to tie it, I could play off.
Yeah.
The retaining wall attaches to the corners of the house.
Yes.
Actually, actually, I mean...
On the new one?
Actually also goes right to the ride with some stay haves.
Yes.
Yeah, that's it, yeah, but this is also, uh...
Right, but that's a... Oh, that's a high over retaining wall. That's, you know, a foot.
I think so, there's those stairs go up from the parking lot to the building.
Right, they go up, so the house is kinda set down here, so it's not as... I did bring...
And how, and that wall, how far was that?
The, the upwind one?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, here two twenty seven and then it goes to about two thirty one, so it's up two and a half feet tall maybe. And that's still up for debate, but when we put that wall in, depending on what's at the ledge, because the parking court may go all the way right to the ledge, as it goes on the front side of the parking court, the street side.
Also, do I add the ledge where they go?
The edge of the parking court on that.
Right, right here?
Yes, sir. That, depending on exactly where the ledge is, comes out of that. I did bring the elevations to show you what the house will look like from the street. And the, the two parts of the retaining wall that runs above, right at the house, now it needs to just watch where you go. Which are, that one this side, which are, you know, this side. So, the only half is right here.
Yeah, so that's, what's the height there?
Right here might get to six feet. But we have a, you know, we've got an excess right now of one hundred, two hundred yards across.
So before you required how much fill on the old ones?
I think it was over twelve hundred, like...
And now you're removing?
Yes.
So it would be a lot of the ledge.
What will be ledge of the most, it's on the top of the, check out.
Okay. Uh, Abby, town engineer's comments?
Right, the town engineer did review this, um, plan. He, um, uh, provided a memo that the overall, um, drainage pattern of the property was not changing. Um, he asked that the retaining wall detail be provided on the plan, um, that the town department of public works be contacted, um, during construction to inspect the, um, infiltration system while that was, um, ongoing. And then, um, he had a question on the, uh, proposed driveway and walkway materials?
Yes.
What was that, it's labeled on?
The original plan was submitted, uh, it was, the print was kind of printed up in here, the two of those driveways, so the engineer has put it here, which I've highlighted, here, and this is going all the way here, which is...
Oh, yes.
And there was the driver, is that...
It's one lane?
It's one lane, so it's probably four.
Okay, but it should have, it's not highlighted. Okay, uh, you probably had, uh, the...
So what be, what's before you is, um, a minor modification request to the original special permit that was approved in, um, March. So again, we need a motion for, um, if this is, to determine if this is a minor modification. And then, um, vote on a new, um, proposal I have, um, provided to, and by email, I draft, uh, motion that, um, adding in there that, um, the, um, conditions from the original March approval are still in effect. That's, um, related to the hours of construction, um, the truck routes limited to, um, access the property from Summer Street off of, um, one oh nine, um, that any, um, damage unto the pavement or anything in the right of way be, uh, repaired, um, and that if there's any deviations from the, um, approved plan and as-built plan, be submitted. Added about the, um, inspections by public works.
Okay. Um, first off, I guess I need a, you want a board member to find this to be a minor modification from the plan we approved? Thank you.
I'll second your, I'll second your motion.
Is that my motion?
That's your motion. I'll second your motion, finding that this is a minor modification to the current approval plan.
Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Abby has read a draft motion. Does anyone support that?
Oh, okay, so now on the, on the left, fine, that's the...
Oh, I forgot, Mr. Chairman.
So it's one thousand one hundred fifteen cubic yards, if they're calling out.
That's a burden, yes, excess.
I forgot to add that this, um, wasn't a home in public care, but we did notify the abutters for this, um, this meeting tonight. I think there is one person here in the audience that I don't know.
Uh, I'd love to hear any thoughts or comments from you at this time, okay? Let's go. Okay, um, you both here for...
I'm not an abutter, I'm the actual owner, sorry.
Hi. Okay, so we have found it to be a minor modification, and we have, uh, draft verbiage for, uh, the new special permit, earth material. Need a motion for, for...
So... Since they're moving out there, do you have, you put in conditions about the first track, um, tracking for, for...
Yes, we had that before about, um...
Is that standard?
Yeah, that was one of the standard conditions that we had before about having, um...
It stays in place, yeah. All right.
Sounds good, then.
Can you make a motion for us?
Uh, so I move we approve this, uh, at, uh...
I second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Four.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, good luck. Did you say you were the potential buyer?
No.
All right, uh, next, uh, any signings, decisions for Abby?
Yes, if you sign this one for, um, Far Reach Road.
Yeah, no, thanks for everything.
Is that just?
Yes, that's the only one.
All right, well, that's moving down the line. Any committee reports?
Um, let's see, well, did you, correct, did you actually motion to postpone the hearing for, um?
Oh, no, we didn't, no, we didn't, sorry, um. There's a motion to, uh, postpone three ninety Washington Street.
I have a proposal, continue three ninety Washington Street, EIDR, special permit of public here until Tuesday, August the second. The second of motion.
Seven o'clock.
At seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock at Cafeteria.
Okay.
I'll still second.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 I'll make a motion that we, uh.
Oh, sorry.
If we continue. That guy's going for it. Sorry. I'll make a motion to continue the, uh, public hearing for fourteen Washington Street, Oakmont Tire, the EIDR, special permit, um, which was approved on six fourteen sixteen, um, to the second of August, twenty sixteen, at seven P M. At the fifty car industry.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, um, committee reports.
Say it.
Anything happen in Islington?
Um, I think we informed you at the last meeting about the, um, request for proposals that the task force will be. Um, will be meeting, um, they received the, um, response, uh, earlier in June, and they'll be meeting September eighth to, uh, review that. Uh, that'll be at the Islington Community Center. Um, and then also, uh, Nora and I had just been talking, we were just, um, finding a location, found a location, um, earlier today about, um, trying to organize a, um, a charrette or a citizen meeting, um, for July, Tuesday, July twenty-sixth, to invite, um, you all and, and residents, um, from town to kinda, um, come in and talk about Islington and what they'd like to see there and, um, to share with everyone, to get their input. So we just found a location earlier today, so I'd like to start, um, invite this board. Um, that'll be Tuesday evening on July twenty-sixth, and then we'll, um, tomorrow get started on, um, spreading the word.
So that is, that's intended to be a visioning session, not so much a review of the current proposal, though we will have the proposal available for people to look at. It's more asking people, if you had all the pieces and had the puzzle and wanted to put it together, what would you do? And let everyone kind of work through the process, understand the constraints, uh, physical and financial, and make decisions about what they would like to see. What, what would Islington Center look like if you could designate yourself?
And the presumption would be these people are coming after having seen what's been submitted?
No, not necessarily. Some of them might not have seen it. Some of them might take a look at what has been proposed while they're there. But the idea is to get out more creative ideas. So the proposal was one tool to see what we could have in Islington. And what we got back from that is one developer's idea of what they would do and how it would work financially for them. Um, so what we'd like to see now is residents' ideas of what they'd like to see. If they, if they were in control and could move the pieces around, what ideas would they have? And then the thought is to bring both of those ideas to everything that comes out of them, bring to the Islington Task Force when they meet on the eighth and have some give and take. If they review the proposal that's before them, the task force job is to look at that proposal, to identify the positive attributes and the negative attributes, and then to identify ways of correcting any negative attributes. And we see the residents' visioning, um, ideas adding to that discussion.
Is there any problem with this board showing up en masse?
Um, we should post it. We'll post it, uh, whether, even if, we'll post it either way, and that way you could decide at the last minute if you wanna come or not. And that's up to you, because I don't, what we don't want it to be is, um, is a give and take between board members and residents on something that will eventually be before the board.
Yeah.
We see this rather as each of you acting as individual residents, giving your personal opinions on what you want, not acting as board members. And I, I'm not encouraging the, the applicant to be there either, because I don't want it to be a grave session or a, you know, I, I want it to be an opportunity for people to really expand on their ideas of what they'd like to see and, and get ideas that we can discuss without constraints.
All right, so that will be at, um, the high school in the cafeteria.
Because of their conditions.
Yeah.
So good food will be served. What time on the twenty-sixth?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock at the cafeteria in the high school. Okay. All right, uh, any other committees? Make a report now, to your folks. None for you?
Haven't.
See anything you've heard? Anything juicy? Coming on an M F C or? Anyone else?
I don't think anything's changed since the last.
Okay. It's fine. All right, Abby, any other topics?
We just received the attorney general's approval of the, um, May, um, changes from town meeting. Um, so that's being posted right now, um, with the town clerk. It has to be posted, I think, for two weeks before it's official. But the attorney general did approve all of our zoning changes, so.
So our S R D is?
Yep, our opens, our S R D is now, uh, removed and it's in the open space residential by law now.
All right.
What else?
Good to see work following through.
We, we can tell you, we had, uh, the land use committee met last week and we had, uh, Fox and Village come in and talk to us about their thoughts of, of submitting a, an O S R D plan, possibly an O S R D plan, or possibly asking to rezone land next to their property as far as the A R O zone for a possible expansion. So they're just beginning to think about it.
You mean the O S R D, that, towards a fifty-five and older?
It would be fifty-five and older, just like the rest of the development. So they're just beginning to discuss their options for there's land available that's right next to them, that's undeveloped.
And your feeling is it wasn't the change in the S R D that brought down it, they would have pursued that regardless?
No, no, they, they've been thinking about this for a while and they're just getting closer to, um, preparing to purchase that land. Considering their options and what to say.
Target, um, also contacted us about putting solar panels on the roof. So they'll be submitting some, wait, okay. Cause I've, um, had been discussed before, I think the, um, buildings have been designed to support solar on the roof, so, um, we should be submitting something soon.
We never got an answer to that when I asked earlier.
So.
This seemed to be pushed back, but they, uh, yeah.
Right, they, they were designed to accommodate future solar. They didn't want to promise that they would do it, but they did.
Were all the buildings built in?
I believe so.
Not just tar, just targeted.
The large ones were. So like, um, I believe Wegmans, Target, uh, I think Sports Authority, possibly Marshals. I'm not a hundred percent sure that, a lot of the smaller stores.
Small, um, street.
If you, if you go on Google Earth and, and look down, you will see an awful lot of solar panels on large buildings now. And more than you realize, uh, you don't get to see them because you're on the ground level. Like if you were, you would go down.
They've been open for what, about fifteen months?
Well, it's like the Wegmans was just under, been open for ten months. Nine months. So the first, the first stores opened in March.
By waiting.
Wegmans was the last that opened up.
Till now, presumably Target now is gonna have to spend a little more money not having done it at the build.
I imagine that's probably.
Wonder what happened in fifteen months? Change there?
I'd say that the corporate policy evolved.
Oh.
There's also.
What do they got?
And, and the incentives, the, the deadline for incentives is getting very close, it's now or never.
Takes a long time to get good work done on that resource. I'm just finishing a two-year discussion with that resource about that personal project, it's, uh, slow.
Speaking of slow, they, I know, they moved the, the pole.
The pole? No, no, you don't have to.
Still speaking of resources.
So it's, it's, uh, a ticket's been issued for Eversource to move the pole. We've been told they'll be moving it in the next couple of weeks, but that's the start. Then they put the new pole up. They move over their power lines, then we have to wait for Verizon and Comcast and then our own fire alarm alarms will fire, we'll also get moved. So I don't know exactly how fun that'll be, but we couldn't wait. So the paving of the lot and the road will take place tomorrow and the next day, and we're going end up patching where that pole is when the pole runs out.
Well, just put the binder coat on now, right, the top?
No, the binder's been on for months, for a month and a half.
Oh, really, so we're gonna live with the patch because?
We're putting, we're gonna put the top on, the lip of the patch, because we can't delay any further. We're trying to get the, uh, police station traffic, construction traffic to go through there. And we also need that road open when school opens in the end of August, so we just can't, we just can't fit off in the moment.
So I took a look at that telephone pole. It's not just a telephone pole, pulling up wires is where the wires go to that pole and then they go on the ground.
Right.
So that means.
It's the last fallen line, yeah.
Right, so are they going to shorten the underground cables or lengthen them?
Uh, I, I think there's very little change, because it's moving.
No, no, they have.
Over and in. They're, they're, it's all designed appropriately to go, to move the cables underground and there's enough slack. It's already been looked at.
So are they extending the underground cables towards High Street?
I don't believe they are. I think there's, they're, yes, I think it's, I think the, the new pole will be further away from High Street and further to the south. So it'll be south and east of where the existing one is. So the underground stretch will be shortened. The idea is the pole has to go on the other side of the road.
There's a joke there somewhere, but anyway, um, approval of minutes. I have not had an opportunity to look. I apologize for that. But.
I don't recall, if, if I, if I do, I don't remember, so.
I did.
Yay. Dan, Dan is, um, more for a hard on that.
I know she did, and I feel bad, but.
How many people, how many people look at it? I think we gotta wait, so.
Yeah, let's, let's wait till August. We'll prove those down. Um, next meeting, August second, seven o'clock. Next task force meeting for Islington, September the eighth. But we do have that charrette on Tuesday the twenty-sixth at seven o'clock, Iceco Cafe.
Right, and I'll send you out something.
Okay. Anything else, new board member, right now? Any motion to adjourn?
So moved? Just a second.
All those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye. Three is enough.